Freeholders meeting. We're going to start off with our conference agenda. Who do you want to get the world?
Freeholders, Arthur Bartlett, Best, Eric Nuppi, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lusar.
Welcome everyone. It's really special night here in Passaic County. We have some very important awards to make today and recognition today, I guess. As you can look around you, you can see there's quite a few number of Passaic County Sheriff's Officers here. The ones that we are going to be honoring, well, everyone's honoring tonight, but for two years, we've been trying to outfit these dogs with bulletproof vests to protect them when they're out on duty with their officers. So the first year, we got most of them. This past year, we're able to outfit every single dog. And if I'm not mistaken, there's 15, Officer Tengora? Fifteen dogs at $3,000 a vest. We got them the ones that we found or were suggested by the sheriff's officers. That would be the best ones for these dogs. But we raised money through Paws in the Park, which is our annual event that we use to raise money for the Sheriff's Canine Department. We have three very generous donors here with us tonight who donated, each one donated a $3,000 vest to specific dogs. We'd like to welcome them. And I'd like to invite the sheriff up first to say a few words before we give out these awards because he can really get the nail on the head and talks about how important these vests are. Sheriff?
Thank you, Director, and again, from our department to you and of course, all the freeholders, thank you so much for organizing yours and Mark and getting these donations. They are so very, very important to our department. As you can see here, the officers are with their dogs and unfortunately, not all of them are here. Some of them are currently working. But again, these vests protect the dogs in the event that they are shot at, in the event that they are stabbed. The officers are, these dogs are their family. They go home with the dogs. They're with them each and every day. So it's very important that they be protected. A lot of times, the dog will go before the officer. And as you know, that's a very, very difficult thing. So again, I'd like to thank our recipients, who will be up here shortly, for their generous donations. One individual actually flew in from out of state to be here and is flying out tomorrow. And again, these are, are really appreciated so very, very much. And again, our officers do a phenomenal job. And I'd be remiss if I didn't make one additional comment. Today is our business administrator's birthday. I don't want to embarrass him, but he's working on his birthday, so administrator, happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
I was going to say happy birthday.
So to do our first presentation, I would like to invite Freeholder aside, Arthur, up to make the presentation.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Could we have a great round of applause before we start for all our sheriff's officers? All sheriff's officers here, please come on up with the K-9 unit. We're very grateful for the work of our sheriff's officers. In fact, they live their lives online every day to help protect our county residents. So it's my honor to recognize the Onyx and Breezy Foundation, which donated a vest to the K-9 unit. Whereas the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic, the Passaic County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Richard Burdick, and the Friends of Passaic County Park Incorporated, hosted a second annual Paws in the Park on Saturday, October 7th, 2017, at Gophers Brook Park in Hawthorne, with the proceeds to benefit Passaic County Sheriff's Department K-9 unit. And whereas, as a result of the event, three K-9 bulletproof vests were donated to the Passaic County Sheriff's Department K-9 unit. And whereas, the Onyx and Breezy Foundation donated a vest to K-9 Demi and her handler, Jamie Tengora, were forwarded 2004 by Mark and Wanda Chefs to honor the memory of their two Labrador Achievers, and their passion for animals led them to create this nonprofit foundation. And whereas, the Onyx and Breezy Foundation assists animals in a variety of ways, including lending, financial support for equipment, for medical facilities, for much-needed research, for organizations that benefit animals, for spaying and neutering programs, for disaster relief, for food, medicine supplies, for shelters, rescues, for foster groups and sanctuaries, for pets of individuals who are medical hardship present, and for many other endeavors that benefit the welfare of animals. And whereas, 100% of the contributions to the Onyx and Breezy Foundation are directed to fulfill the goals of the foundation, which utilizes only volunteer staff. And whereas, all administrative expenses of the foundation are paid through donations from the chef's family, and fundraising expenses are paid through donations from the chef's family and other corporate and individual sponsors. And whereas, the Passaic County Board of Children Freeholders and the County of Passaic wishes to express sincere appreciation to Mark Chefs and Wanda Chefs and the Onyx and Breezy Foundation, who have given so generously to protect K-9 Demi, now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Children Freeholders of the County of Passaic, that hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Mark Chefs and Wanda Chefs and the Onyx and Breezy Foundation for their generous donation of the K-9 bulletproof vest to K-9 Demi. Please give me a round of applause for Chef. Do we have the chef's family here?
I just want to say it was truly our pleasure to be able to help Demi. These men and women go out every day and they risk their lives for us, so it's the least that we could do and take care of these canines. So keep up the good work. Keep safe, both of you, and take care of that Demi. Thank you.
Okay, in order to expedite the process, we're going to take the picture after we mount it.
Excuse me. Thank you.
I'd like to invite Freeholder Bartlett up to present the next proclamation. It's for K-9 Justice and his handler. And I'd like Al DeMarzo to come up.
Good evening, everyone. It is such a treat to have so many people here with us. I know we've got not only the K-9, but a bunch of other things to do this evening. I'm so glad to have so many folks here from all across the county. It's my pleasure to read this one into the record. Whereas, the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic, the Passaic County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Richard H. Burdick, and the Friends of Passaic County Parks Incorporated, hosted the second annual Paws in the Park on Saturday, October 7th, at Gophers Brook Park in Hawthorne, with proceeds to benefit the Passaic County Sheriff's Department K-9 unit. And whereas, as a result of the event, three K-9 bulletproof vests were donated to the Passaic County Sheriff's Department K-9 unit. And whereas, Al DeMarzo, who donated a vest to K-9 Justice and his handler, Scott Phillips. Where's Justice? Where's Justice and Scott? All right. Justice and Phillips, Al DeMarzo was born in Patterson and moved to Hawthorne, worked for the Passaic County Park Police and the Passaic County Sheriff's Department. And whereas, Al DeMarzo, while with the Park Police, organized the first Special Olympics Fishing Day in conjunction with ESPN's Fishing Hole TV show out of Little Rock, Arkansas, utilizing their direct guidance and mimicking their successful national event. And all members of the Park Police who were involved in some way, making that event a success. He was also invited to participate annually with events where he represented the Passaic County Sheriff's Department in uniform, providing thumbprints for emergency identification on Passaic County Sheriff's cars of all Special Olympians. And he also served as a delegate for the PBA. And whereas, Al DeMarzo has since relocated to Denton County, Texas. You're the one who flew in for this. Thank you so much. Denton County, Texas, where he is a successful business owner and works actively to support the local animal adoption agencies, Human Tomorrow and DFW Rescue Me. And whereas, Al DeMarzo is active in the Chambers of Commerce, as well as other civic organizations. He served on the Board of Directors of the, yes, he did, of the South Central Bloodhound Club, President and Board Member of the North Texas Alarm Association, President and Board Member of the Italian Club of Dallas, Board Member of the Texas Burglar and Fire Alarm Association. And in addition to fishing and rescue work, his interests include British motorsport cars and airplanes. Room for a way bigger garage when you're in Texas, right? And whereas, the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders wishes to express its sincere appreciation to Al DeMarzo, who has given so generously to protect K-9 Justice. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders, that hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Al DeMarzo for the donation of the K-9 bulletproof vest to K-9 Justice.
Thanks, everybody. Continue supporting this wonderful sheriff's department, this wonderful K-9 division. And I don't think I can say anymore. I think Freeholders said too much.
Okay, we have one more until we get some new dogs in the department. I would like to present the next proclamation myself. So I'm not going to mention any names, but they do have a representative here, Cheryl Spatafora. If you could come on up. And pretty much this is going to read like the other ones. As a result of the event, three K-9 bulletproof vests were donated to Passaic County Sheriff's Department K-9 unit. Whereas, this foundation donated a vest to K-9 Cohen and his handler, Jason Katz. All right, guys. Justice? Oh, okay. There you go. With donations from this foundation, whose primary purpose is to provide contributions to help the local community. It's being run by children, who have maintained and continues to have this foundation grow so they can continue to make donations. They made donations to the first Paws in the Park, and they made this donation this year of a $3,000 vest for Justice. And whereas, the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic wishes to express its sincere appreciation. We are so thankful. And therefore, now be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic, that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds the foundation for the donation of the K-9 vest for Justice. And would you like to say a couple more?
On behalf of Mike Borse, who is a wonderful and generous person, I thank you. You know, we're very happy to be able to donate to these dogs, but he prefers to stay anonymous. Thank you very much.
Before we come up and take a picture, you know, the success of Paws in the Park doesn't happen by one person. It took a group of people. And I'd like to recognize the people in the room. If you're here and you are on the committee for Paws in the Park, I'd like you to stand up and be recognized for all the hard work that you do. So please, stand up so we can do a little applause. And now I'd like to invite all the recipients to come on up. We'd like to take a picture, which we'll send to you. Are we going to have the dogs stand in front of the people in the back? All right, whatever you want. Yeah, so that's why I figured the people in the back. Okay, so the people without dogs are going to stand behind the table. The people with dogs stand in front. You know, these are highly trained dogs and we don't want them to get nervous. I'd like to invite the officers downstairs into the first floor. There's all white snacks and stuff down there if you want anything. So you know, the hardest part of this is not being able to like hug and cuddle and cuddle with the dogs because we love those dogs. I'd like to invite Freeholder TJ Best and Freeholder John Bartlett down to help to give out the awards to City Green.
Good evening, everyone. While Freeholder Bartlett joins us at the podium, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about this partnership that we have with City Green. Started about five years ago, five or six. Five years ago, it came out of our Open Space Trust Fund, in which some of our members wanted to do a micro grant program. As part of our Open Space Trust Fund, we make awards to nonprofits and municipalities to do purchasing of open space, tracts of land, or renovations to public places. Most of the time, it's parks and recreation. However, you have a lot of small groups, churches, boys and girls clubs, community centers, senior citizen homes, who want to do smaller projects and might not have a 501(c)(3) status and may not want to go through all the paperwork of just getting a nice, good community garden going on. So we partnered with someone who really knows how to do this, and that's City Green. So over the last five years, and I think we have the numbers, how many gardens? Over the last five years, we've been able to provide 53 community gardens throughout the entire city. In continuing this effort, tonight, we're here to do a couple more. So I'm going to pass it over to John, who'll introduce our friends from City Green and we'll give checks out to everyone.
TJ is far too modest. He's been the Freeholders representative to our Open Space Program for a number of years and was really one of the motivating, one of the moving people behind this to get this started. And I think he's absolutely right, which is that this is an opportunity not just to, you know, build or restore or repair big parks and big projects, but for individual community groups to be able to get out there, get their hands in the soil, and learn about growing. And we've got a tremendous partner in City Green, Jennifer, you and your whole team not only provide technical support and advice and a tool bank and all this other support for the community gardens, but also are right there in Clifton as a resource, as a farm stand. I know I brought an overseas delegation there that wanted to explore American farming methods a couple of months ago, and I appreciate your hospitality for them. Everything you do is very oriented towards the community. Why don't you and your team come on up and tell us about each of tonight's recipients?
I would like to take this opportunity also to thank the Board of Children Freeholders for providing this funding for the community garden program. We call it DIG IN. After tonight, we'll have 58 community gardens throughout Passaic County, within almost every single municipality. And I'm also really proud that many of the gardens that we funded from the very beginning are still so successful. Their membership is growing every year. The amount of food they're growing is increasing every year. So the assistance that we're able to provide through the funding from the Freeholders is providing the kind of support that these gardens need to get off to a really strong start and become really sustainable on their own. So we're really proud of the vast variety of partners, like you said, from churches to community centers to boys and girls clubs, groups of people who are coming together to grow healthy food, to have a space for community gathering, a place to teach kids about healthy food and growing veggies. And so we're really excited. It's really been the kind of community garden program that we've always wished we could run and we're able to do it between this really, I think, such a dynamic partnership between a nonprofit and government. And it's really been working so beautifully. So tonight, we have a whole bunch of awards to give out. Erin's going to go through the partners one by one, and we'll call everybody up and give them their award and we'll take a picture at the end. Thank you.
Okay, so we've had gardens. Hi, everyone. I'm Erin. I'm the community garden coordinator. I'm providing that on-the-ground support to all those wonderful community gardens. We have different tiers of funding, so our first-year gardens get $2,500. Our second-year gardens get up to $1,000. And then every year subsequent, we have, I think, some gardens that have been in the program for five years. They get kind of about $500 every year since then. We also, last year, started water assistance grants. That's a big issue for some of our gardens in Patterson, getting water to their gardens. So we're able to put in rain barrels or able to tie into the municipal water by giving water-specific grants. So we're actually giving two of those away today. So why don't we get started? So we have a first-year garden. We have the Great Falls Youth Garden of the New Jersey Community Development Corporation. So tonight, we have Ms. Vicky Hernandez, the Chief Program Officer, and Denise Benang, the Youth Center Coordinator, with us today from the New Jersey CDC. All right? Our next garden, we have the Preakness Valley United Reform Church Garden in Wayne. They are also a first-year garden. All right? All right, so we have a, we have the Lynn George Memorial Garden of the North Hilding Green Team, and they are one of our fourth-year gardens. We have Grace Chapel of Patterson Garden. Jerry Bird, are you here with us tonight? All right, there's Mr. Jerry Bird. We have our Edible Oasis. It's part of Oasis at Haven Center for Women and Children with us tonight. Do we have Ms. Latisha? She was here. All right. We have St. Peter's Haven Garden, another fourth-year garden. They also have a food pantry. They're one of our gardens that also have a pantry connected to them. Is Lillian Vega here tonight? Yes, she is. We have Preakness Bible Church Garden. Ms. Jen Woods is joining us today. She's the secretary with the garden. They are a fourth-year garden. All right. We have the Passaic Neighborhood Center of Women Community Garden, one of our fifth-year gardens. They've been with us from the beginning. And we have Sister Elaine McGuire and Sister Geraldine Tantus. We have St. Paul's Milford, Apple Acres. We have a large contingent of gardens in West Milford. Apple Acres is one of them. They're also one of our fifth-year gardens. It's Mr. Russ Banks with us tonight. All right. We have Ringwood Community Garden. This is another fifth-year garden. It's been with us from the beginning. They've been gardening longer than that. But is Nancy here tonight to take this award? Cool kids to say, unfortunately, will not be getting an award tonight. All right. We have the Jewish Family Service and Children's Center of Clifton Garden. They are a first-year garden. We have the We Over Me Summer and Sixteenth Ave Garden. They are getting a water assistance garden this year. Well, Sebastian and Jay, Jay, do you want to come up too? We have Grace United Presbyterian Church Garden. They are another first-year garden. Is Andy here with us tonight? Ed Christina? This garden, Christ Church Garden of Eden, they have a very beautiful garden. They're using a small amount of space beautifully, and they are getting a water assistance grant this year. All right. We have the Patterson Art Council, the Art Factory Garden. Is Mr. Cunnes here? All right. And then we have the Sprouting Totowa Garden. Is Ms. Rachel here today? We have the Organic Villagers at Betterian's Garden, the Patterson Park Apartments. Are we here tonight? All right. And then we have another first-year garden. All right, and then we have another first-year garden. We have the Holland Christian Center Garden.
This year is eight-year. This funding cycle is eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Oh, over the five years? Yes, it's going to be over a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, as you can see, there's such a wide variety. The great thing about Passaic County is it covers the most rural in the Highlands, all the way down to the cities in Patterson and Passaic. And there are gardens in all of those different spaces, from veterans' housing to public senior housing to community groups. It's just a really amazing group of people, and I'm sure we're all really pleased to thank the freeholders for the work.
If you want to come in, we do two lines behind the table. People want to back up the chicks up.
All of our gardeners, we're going to be meeting downstairs in room 105.
I'm going to see what else happens.
As all of our friends from City Green and our community gardens go downstairs, you would notice that everyone had a check, a nice, beautiful, big check, even if it was four hundred dollars or twenty-five hundred dollars. We printed all of our checks in-house in our roads department. And I'm not sure if he's here right now, but I wanted to thank Dan Leese, who does all of our in-house printing. He does a great job. They're wanting to keep that, so if you can post it up. It's weather resistant. You can hang it up in the garden.
Director, last on the agenda this evening is, I think every one of the group is aware that women are playing a vital role in our society, more so than ever, at least visibility-wise. I think you've always been the backbone of much of what happens good in this world. I'm proud to say that Passaic County doesn't just recognize that today. Back in nineteen ninety-nine, Passaic County and the Board of Chosen Freeholders created a commission on the status of women. Ms. Ernestine Dukes was the first person appointed to that commission. And under the leadership of our only female freholder, Director Lozara, we are appointing and reappointing women this evening to that award on our regular agenda. Freehold Director, I'm not going to take any more of your thunder away, but I think it's a tribute to you and your leadership here on the board that we recreate and reestablish this commission, the status of women. And I congratulate all the women here who were being sworn in today. Then to join you, I think the director will read your names. And maybe as you read your names, you can come up to the podium. And then we are going to have the director swear you in. Oh, maybe so. Maybe when you come up, you just stand right in front of the table here. Is that a right gesture?
I would like to acknowledge someone who has been a big proponent of having women take a vital role in the government of this county and this state. And I would like to invite him up possibly to say a few words. That's our state and Passaic County Chairman, John Curry.
Thank you, Madam Director. Isn't it great to have a great woman lead these men? First of all, I want to say good evening to all of you. It's good to see so many. I want to congratulate our great Sheriff's Department and our K-9 unit. I want to congratulate the people from City Green as well. And of course, all of our women from our Women's Commission that are being sworn in. But ladies and gentlemen, my message to you tonight is, as we travel around this county of about five hundred, two thousand people, so many people ask, "What does the freeholders do?" I can tell you, if you could do me one favor, and let the public know what outstanding job this group of people do for the citizens of Passaic County. They do a tremendous job in using your tax dollars and providing so many services and programs that sometimes people don't see. These beautiful gardens that you will see now that we have them in every municipality. Most people don't know that they are funded by this freeholder board through the tax dollars, the K-9 unit, the services they provide, and our fifty-three agencies that we have. So I want to commend our freeholders for an outstanding job that they do. And I just hope you would carry the message each and every day. So when folks say they do nothing, trust me, they do a lot for very, very little pay. So, thank you. Congratulations, guys. To get, you know, with this year being the year of the woman, we have a federal of three hundred and eighty-three women running for Congress or the United States Senate across the country. I think that is a wonderful thing. Obviously, right here in Passaic County, we have two women that are running for election, one being our freeholder director, and that's our county clerk that will be running for election as well as so many local seats. We are such an opponent of supporting what women do here. And I am in particular into something that I'm very proud of. So I want to congratulate all of you this evening. And I want to congratulate the women's in Ernestine. Thank you for what you do and helping me for the many, many years that we've worked together. Thank you.
So you've heard the name Ernestine Dukes quite a few times tonight. I have to say that, starting in two thousand fifteen, when I first started running for this office, Ernestine was the biggest advocate for this commission. Every time I'd see Ernestine, she says, "When are we going to get that commission back for women?" And I'd say, "We're going to do it." And thank goodness, we were doing it tonight. So I would like to call up Ernestine Dukes, Erin Boreum, Sandra Galvin, Lottie Cole, Edie Galen, Kathleen Carrick, Hazel Hughes, Orvina Henry, Jane Scalzetti, Deborah Fowler, Dara Taskin, Joel Graham, Devaith Perez, Lisa Kasparian, and Janet Abdallah. Okay. You all have a copy of the oath. I'll read it, and we'll go as we go along. You can say your name. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the con... Oh, I'm sorry, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people and that I will faithfully impartially and justly perform all of the duties as commissioner for the Commission on the Status of Woman to do the best of my abilities to and understanding so help me God. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to... Everybody had a review of the agenda of... We'll get a move on. And then do a review of the agenda, K-1 through K-2. Do we have any link starters?
We have an amended resolution, K-27, which is a resolution authorizing offers of purchase and sale, the acquisition of an easement at three properties owned by, I guess that's the name of it, private parties in order to undertake the replacement of North Hail and Avenue over Squabrook, structure number sixteen hundred dash three three zero in the borough of North Hail. That's an amendingary resolution, just for some technical changes that the engineer had to do. But you can figure that out. This will be link starter K-43, which is a resolution authorizing the rejection of all bids for SB eighteen dash zero zero... I'm sorry, zero one two licenses and security cameras for the Preckus Healthcare Center in accordance with JSA forty-eight, colon eleven dash thirteen point two D.
Yes, sir, please.
Secondly, our amended directive to use of order is K-44, which is a resolution authorizing a word contract to Golf Car Specialties LLC for twelve Yamaha Drive II golf carts equal or better for the Passaic County Golf Course as per the bid. And finally, K-45, which is a resolution awarding a contract to Taylor Made and Peri Ellis Supreme International as eligible vendors for purchase of wholesale merchandise on an as, excuse me, needed basis at the Preckus Valley Golf Course Golf Shop in Wayne, New Jersey. Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this being specified, the time, date, location, including the annual notice adopted and reorganization being filed with the county clerk, posted in administration building, and mailed to two newspapers and corns for the provisions of the law. Freeholders, Okter Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFleur, Deputy Director James, Director Lozara. "O God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our freeholders in the county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord." Amen.
.................................
We have a moment of silence. We remember whether men or women have died while serving the United States armed forces. Thank you. Through the minutes of March twenty-seventh, two thousand and eight.
Freeholders, Bartlett, Best, Deputy Director James, Director Lozara.
Yes. Freeholder reports. Does anybody have one? No? See, no one will move on. Did I have to turn it over? Communications? None. Have emotions open up the public portion of the meeting? James and Bartlett? Anyone wishing to be heard, please come up to a row.
Freeholders, Bartlett, Best, Deputy Director James, Director Lozara.
Anyone wishing to be heard, you can come up to the podium. We have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Barbara Lamanna, four thirty-seven Colfax Road, Wayne. I came today to talk about the gaping potholes on four thirty-seven Colfax... On Colfax... Sorry, Colfax Road. But, um... Now I'm changing my mind. The residents of Colfax Road are taxpayers, and we deserve the same rights as everybody else in Passaic County. We deserve to live noise-free, peacefully, just like everybody else. The noise pollution that is on our road is ridiculous. And I cannot even believe that we have been coming here for how long now? Six months, trying to get rid of these things. Honestly, I don't care about the grant that Passaic County received. I care about the quality of my life and the quality of the lives of all the residents of Colfax Road. Now I'm going to go back to the potholes. Our road needs to be resurfaced. And if that, if resurfacing our road takes away the rumble strip, still be it. It makes us happy, makes you happy. There's a six-foot-by-eight-foot gaping pothole that Passaic County has come and filled three times already, and I thank you very much for that. It's two doors down from me, but every single time a car goes by, they have to drive over the rumble strip. So a machine, it sounds like a machine, gone all day long. I live, this is how I live, with this con- I live, this is how I live, with this constant noise pollution. So you fill it, and then it goes right back to being this gaping pothole. And this is not the only one, this is the biggest one, but it's not the only one. Directly in front of my house, there's two water runoff gratings that are sinking. Okay, so when people try to avoid the rumble strips, they're driving over these two gratings that are going to fall in. They're sinking, and that's going to be a major accident. That needs to be fixed. So we really need to be on that resurfacing list for the quality of our lives, for, to fix the road, to make everybody happy, make you happy, keep your grant, make us happy, no noise. You have to, you have to put us back in the position where we were prior to these rumble strips, to this noise pollution. Thank you.
Carolyn Marcusson, 413 Colfax Road. I'm here tonight just to clarify what may be a misconception regarding the application of the centerline rumble strips on Colfax Road. It's well documented that centerline rumble strips are designed to prevent head-on crossover accidents, but in the case of carpeting Colfax with centerline rumble strips, the county didn't consider that type of crash data. I know this because I asked for such data via an Oprah request to the county, and there is none. So I want you all to understand that. Crash data was never used. I also want to present to the Freeholders today a letter I received from Wayne Township regarding head-on and crash-over crash data. This letter was researched and written by Sergeant First Class Donald Pavlak, and it reads, "In response to Oprah Request 18-182, I have conducted a 10-year search of the Wayne Police Database for head-on crashes on Colfax. Based on the search, I have found that there was no head-on crash in the past 10 years on the roadway. The requester also asked about crossover crashes in her request. This would be considered a head-on crash as per NJDOT reporting guidelines. So if the concern was the prevention of head-on collisions, the data is clear, and it should satisfy the safety concern of head-on collisions because the data shows that such concern is unwarranted. We can look to actual data to show that the rumble strips are a heavy-handed measure, given that what they were designed to prevent generally doesn't even happen on Colfax. No matter how well-intentioned, the rumble strips are a solution to a problem that's de minimis on Colfax. In fact, over the course of the last six months, residents have given you numerous examples of rumble strips creating, not ameliorating, creating a dangerous condition on our road. Because of this, we've been asking for the rumble strips to be removed. The crash data is clear. It is in black and white, and it does not support keeping the rumble strips on Colfax Road." And I'd like to submit that. And since I have a few more minutes, I'd just like to say that when we came here and we asked for removal, we didn't, we were still mindful of safety considerations. We all want the roads to be safer, and we put a lot of effort into doing something to make that road safer because we see it as the rumble strips are making us more unsafe. And what we did was, we got the speed limit lower from 45 to 35. That's a significant difference, and I really ask you that, when you go home today, are you on a road that goes 45? Slow down to 35. It's significant, it makes a big difference. And we all know that if you drive slower and cars have now been slowed down, that means less accidents, generally speaking. That's well documented data, and it means less severe accidents. Whereas with the rumble strips, what we're very concerned about, and we keep bringing to attention is, and what we've seen, we've witnessed, with schoolchildren breaking my own front yard, is that cars either jerking, come towards, there's just not enough room there. And what we're afraid of is that a car
Over three minutes, thank you.
Thank you. I have the letter, so we have a bucket of papers now. 10-year data.
See you, no one else at the podium, I'll move to close the public portion.
Freeholders, Bartlett. Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Can I have a motion to accept amended Resolution K-27?
Second.
Bartlett and Best.
Freeholders, Bartlett, Best, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Can I have a motion to accept Resolutions K-1 through K-42?
A move.
Best and James.
Freeholders, Bartlett, Best, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Can I have a motion to accept personnel adjournment? James and Bartlett.
Freeholders, Bartlett, Best, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Yes, can I have a motion to move the bills? James and Bartlett.
Freeholders, Bartlett, Best, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Can I have a motion for the certification apparel? James and Bartlett.
Freeholders, Bartlett, Best, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
We are in receipt of departmental reports.
Received and filed.
Have a motion to adjourn.
Madam Director, before you, before you made the first resolution on tonight's agenda, changed the meeting location back to April 24, the next meeting will be here, and the main eighth meeting will be up at William Patterson University at the Student Center. That resolution was K-1 that was adopted.
And before we adjourn, I'd just like to say that someone will be at Colfax Road tomorrow to fix those potholes and take a look and see what they can do on them.
I just want to thank Barbara and Brown for being consistent, coming out. I appreciate the information from Sergeant Pavlak, I want to read that letter. This is something that we're trying to, that I at least am trying to figure out a way to do. And I don't want you to think that your concerns are falling on deaf ears. We need to get this done, and we need to get it done in a way that, you know, protects residents and also protects all the county taxpayers. So thank you for your consistency, and know that I'm doing my best to stay on.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Freeholders, Bartlett, Best, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.